All the July 10th meeting of the Hamilton County Council to order and we'll start with the rule call.
Ken Alexander.
President.
Steve Schwartz.
President.
Brad Beaver.
Here.
Rick McKinney.
Present.
Amy Masalomani.
Present.
Mr. President, we have a quorum with Counselor Hearn and Counselor Glenn being absent tonight.
Great. At this time, we will have an invocation and a pledge of allegiance led by Rick McKinney.
Good having Father. Thank you for the opportunity to serve the citizens of Hamilton County and pray you just give us guidance and wisdom to make honorable and equitable decisions as well as be with our law enforcement and our public safety personnel throughout the county and throughout the state and the country that protect us every day. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we need to read and approve the minutes of the regular meeting on June the 5th, 19.
I'm moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes. Now's the time for public comments. Anybody who's not on the agenda from the general public that wants to speak to the county council, now's the time. I see nobody getting up. We'll move on. We'll go to committee and officer reports, presidents' report. The only thing I got, we had several openings since our last meeting. Myself and Steve Schwartz, I think Mr. Hearn's attended the opening of the jail pod.
Yes.
That went real well. We took, I took a little tour and looks great and ready for new occupants in there. Rick, you went over to the flyover grand opening, didn't you?
Yes, myself and I believe Steve, Ken, Jeff, and Fred were also present and it was pretty impressive. Nice job everybody did, so getting lots of use.
Good deal. Anything else that opened or we attended our last meeting?
Just a couple of things. Today, I attended the trustees meeting up in Jackson Township. All the trustees were there and their deputies, commissioners. It was very well attended. They had a panel of the non-for-profits there.
Yeah.
With question, answers, and it went very well.
Was it the same group me and you met with?
Yes.
Or was it, you were there, Ken, you were there, weren't you? We met with the directors of the nonprofits?
Yes.
It was the same group, Steve?
Same group, little bit different format.
Okay.
But it was very interesting. The other was the parks tour that we had.
Yeah, right, that's right.
It was a parks tour. Thank you to Al Patterson and all the employees there at the Parks Department. Very well received and very well, very educational experience. The other, I did go on a soil and water tour with Claire Lane from Soil and Water and we'll probably discuss that a little bit later in our agenda.
Okay. Mr. Vice President.
After our joint meeting we had with commissioners and one of the items at the very end was talking about space needs and that sort of thing. I started having some second thoughts about quickly giving up our space and because once we give it up, I don't think it'll come back or will be easily obtained. So I just had a quick communication exchange with Steve Wood and he assured me that they weren't going to be demoing anytime soon, but he was going to get cost estimates, come back to us, and we can talk about it some more. So I just wanted to ask everybody to maybe rethink that. Perhaps there can be another source of space for the veteran service officer. I also had a chance to go to the county council, a state called meeting a couple of weeks ago, and Fred went and Dawn and Robin went, and they had quite a few people there from all over the county and several items they gave us, I think I'll share later, like during our budget session, that sort of thing. Last but not least, I also had the chance to meet with the director of the Humane Society and they're starting a capital campaign and I, along with Commissioner Harbrand, have talked to her and have talked together and I'm going to make a resolution in August. It's not prepared yet for all of us to discuss and vote on, on giving a, I would say, a substantial amount for their building project because A, it's the right thing to do, B, the population's grown so much and the Humane Society's outgrown their space. They've gotten free, not free, they've gotten a donation of land and so I believe they've already got close to 25%. Perhaps what we give them may put them over the 50% mark. So I'll have that ready with Chris's help at our August meeting. That's it for me.
How about the Highway Committee?
Well, you stole the thunder about the Lowe's ramp. We didn't have a meeting, but that was great. But also, as I came in, Highway Director Brad Davis gave me a copy of the highway bid letting for the first intersection and I think it's, from his perspective, it's a little bit over budget, but say within acceptable tolerances. So that's the latest news we have there.
Good, thank you. Is that it?
That's it.
I want to just add one thing to the, to your highway report, although I'm not on the Highway Committee. Commissioner, the commissioners, all three commissioners and myself and Brad Davis met with the representative from Noblesville since our last meeting and they indicated to us that they wanted to move forward with the, at least the 8th Street, 10th Street to River Road section of the Pleasant Street, which the biggest part of that, of course, is the bridge. And they kind of wanted to tell us they were ready to move ahead. We tried to pin down a timeline. That was a little vague. Our highway engineer indicated to them that they already had partial design done on that bridge and that we would move ahead with design while they finished their land acquisition. So it's been, what they want to move ahead with has been reduced to 10th Street to River Road. That's all they want to talk about right now. Our bridge is under designed. I did indicate to them before, after the, that they had the funding in place to do the design on that bridge, but we would not be going to any kind of letting until we had an inter-local agreement between the county and Noblesville, specifically what their funding sources are and what encompass that before we move. Wouldn't you say that pretty much summed it up, Brad?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to let you know that meeting did take place and it was the mayor, some engineer, and Counselor Jensen was at that meeting. Okay, the next thing will be finance. We had no finance meeting, but we do have a finance meeting scheduled. When is that date, Robin?
August 2nd.
Second.
We'll have the finance meeting before we go into budget hearings and budget hearings are?
Six and seven.
Okay, so we'll have a finance meeting with Reuter before we, and he will be at the budget hearings when we start, but we're going to run a few things by him. Personnel.
We will have items on personnel discussed coming up in our agenda.
Okay. And Ken, you had something you wanted to add right here?
Yeah, I just, you know, all of us up here have, you know, many, many different obligations that we go to, but you know, none is more pressing than our family and things of that nature. And while I would never want to have to go through this again, but my wife, having had the, some medical issues and had to partake in some of the Riverview, Riverview's facilities to a level with hyperbaric chambers so that she could get well. How that plays into this is I was meeting with the Veterans Administration in downtown and with some state representatives about supporting Hamilton County's vets in a, in a more aggressive way. And one of the things that they, in that conversation, was talking about how the hyperbaric chambers that, that we have up here in Riverview are, are state-of-the-art and they're exactly what they're trying to get installed at all these veterans administrations. And to that point, we're trying to let the VA already work with Riverview to provide people that have traumatic brain injuries to utilize those for, for, to help them with their recovery. And it was, it was eye-opening to see the type of things that we have at our disposal here in Hamilton County. And not only is my wife getting better, but to see that that type of equipment that we have at our, available in our hospitals is there to be used and could be something that could be extraordinarily helpful for the veterans in our community.
Great. Okay, thanks, Ken. All right. Do we, I don't think we have any unfinished business?
No.
Yes?
Our August 7th meeting is at 5:00.
Right.
So I just wanted to make that known for anybody watching or anybody needs to know. We'll be here a couple hours early on August 7th.
Okay, thanks, Rick. I don't see any table business, so we're going to go to new business. And the first, the first part of our new business is to approve vendor claims.
I'm moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded to approve vendor claims. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. The next piece of new business is we're going to get some words of wisdom from Senator Sparts.
Who helped put together my meeting with the VA.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, and thank you, Ken, for your interest in the VA issues.
Thank you for helping set that meeting up.
Yes, and it was very, I was actually impressed with all of the praises. I didn't realize that we have here Riverview, so that's really impressive and amazing. I'm not going to take too much of your time. I know no one wants to listen to any politician, but I've been meeting with several councils and from all four cities I represent and talk about this, our last budget session, and really looking in the future. What are we going to do? So I have three things. I want to kind of give a quick update on the last budget session, have an ask for you based on my conversations from, with other councils, and really talk about what we're working on this summer and next budget session. So I have a quick update. That's how we spend your money for the next two years. So I'll... We did not deal with too many local finance or government issues. Everyone tells us, oh gosh, please state, please stay away from all of our business. So we kind of did. There are a few issues that were brought up and we're going to do a summer study and I'll be talking about that. We spent a lot of time looking into education. It's almost 60% of our budget looking at healthcare. It's a big ticket item, Medicaid. We're spending more and more money on that, so we need to start looking into that. How we can have more money in criminal justice system and public safety and how we can have more money to really address some of the infrastructure's needs. So that's what kind of a big items that we were looking in last session. Talking about infrastructure, a few of the council members were, you know, discussing Noblesville and Westville and Mayor really would like to maybe see how we can work. And we are talking state, local governments, and the county council was looking in east-west corridor. I know that's been on the radar for many years. We had some Blue Ribbon Commission 10 years ago. It was a T-Ravon project. Nothing still happened. And it's really a challenge. And I know there is a lot of things happening on State Road 37, but I think, you know, as a government, we're not very fast. So, you know, if we start planning maybe something soon, you know, maybe eventually in the nearest future, we can get something done because, and there are different perspectives. Mayor Westville has his own perspectives, you know, Mayor of Noblesville, different perspectives, but I would appreciate if, and let me know if you could work with them and maybe you can help out this county too. You know, he, Mayor Westville, very interested in 191st Street. It's one of the major roads that he's looking into development. So if any way I can be helpful, and maybe that could be a partnership between different units, I'd be happy to help. Then looking back on the local finance, there were several issues you probably heard were brought up. It's, one of them was local income tax. And, and we actually had a meeting with Representative Thompson. He's been working on this issue for a while. And you might know that about four years ago, we decided and we allocated some money to Department of Revenue to be able to have to upgrade our software. So we have an ability to actually locate residents where they live. So we actually, now, right now, as you know, we allocate based on the certified levy, but there was some distortion. Some cities were growing faster, some were slower. Some people like it, some not. Then we have this courts and lawsuits and we change the cages, everything changed. So we really want to simplify, streamline system and have ability and more discretion for different councils to manage their rates and finances versus have a lot of formulas that are so convoluted, all the stocker breakers. I said, it's been over 10 years since we had it. You know, there are no losses anymore. We have a new tax system. Let's work with it. So I think Representative Thompson is, really wants to work on the proposal and he's going to look into this summer. And when we have some numbers, I'd be happy to share with you. But as of right now, he's looking maybe have a different councils to, instead of have allocation base, in about 2021, Department of Revenue tells us that they have these capabilities. Well, it means that hopefully in 2022, they actually will make it work. So we can give them a year. But we would have an ability actually to know where a person lives. And then maybe even ability to look for local, that was kind of what is his look and have a city council to be able to have their own rate, the county council have their own rate, and then some of the city money will be allocated to county services too. That's what he's looking. He's been kind of working on that for a few years, but that's not something set in stone. Representative Houston has his own ideas, how he's looking. He's going to come with his proposal too. He's been working for a few years on that issue. But I think we need to be very careful not to reset system every few years and also take a look how it's going to affect municipalities. And if it's going to have significant effects on some of them, how we're going to adjust, make sure that it's not going to create any fiscal issues for them. But what he's looking, actually like what Representative Thompson is looking, you know, to do. Then another thing was, you know, that's a big discussion in tax increment financing. We have good TIFs, we have bad TIFs. So we actually, this is the first year that we'll actually get reporting. DLGF is get reporting for each TIF district. What we're trying to do, make sure that all of this reporting and all of these numbers, we can put on dashboard. And we actually created some of dashboards already for our economic data, from macroeconomic data from different departments. Our management performance have already done it. You can actually go on Hamilton County. And I, I'd be happy to share with you a link and it's very nice. You can compare, you know, our county to other ones, see what kind of different ratio, what trends we have, what is, how we're doing well and which areas, which areas we're not doing well. So we will have an ability to put this data into Tableau. It's a very simple process and then things can be on dashboard and local councils that will have an ability to look at these finances in more transparent way and be like a tool. Another big issue, and I kind of wanted to, you probably heard about it, is Regional Development Authority. It's going to be summer study this, this session, this summer. And it's interesting because I represent all four cities and I met with a few of them and all of them have a different perspective on this issue. So I'm going to see how, if we have it, what, 36 or something, how we're going to make it work, but we're going to look at it. You know, I would love for you to participate in that process and I, you know, I'd be happy to let you know when it's going to be in the committee. And if any of you are interested to be more involved, I'd be happy to connect or testify or come or just share your thoughts with me in any way because I would like to know what Hamilton County is thinking about this issue since kind of seems like it's divided. And ultimately, as a fiscal body, I think this decision should be at the council level for each of the councils. So that's why I spend time, normally meet with commissioners and mayors, but I thought I need to go and meet with council too because ultimately your fiscal oversight of the finances for the county and the same other ones for the cities. So I would like for them to know and be part of this process because I always say, there are two things. You are either at the table or on the menu. You are either at the table or on the menu. And I don't want Hamilton County to be on the menu, because nothing good is going to come out with. So we have to be proactive and active. So this is the key things, and I'd be happy to answer any questions or some of the issues that you think we should look next session. As you know, next session is not our budget session, although we can make budget decision if it affects you guys. We can spend your money, just not ours, right? So we have, we have no bills.
Senator, do you believe that your new income tax software will be able to track the income tax that we send from Hamilton County and designate it as coming from Hamilton County when it gets to the state? Because previously, it has not, and there was no way to track the actual money coming. Do you think the new software will be able to do that?
It better be. We gave $90 million from them, so it better be able to do that. Okay? So that was a big item to that to spend, and this, it should have all capabilities. What is very important, and that's why I want to kind of be proactive, before we set up the system, don't wait when system set up. I want to work with Department of Revenue, determine what is our policy is going to be if it's in three or four years, and set up the reporting and capabilities now when we're still developing. Not just, okay, we already set up this program, now we want a different way, different capabilities, because it's always harder to do that. I used to help corporations with Oracle implementation, and what surprises me, we wait, you know, we design all these things, and then later on, we figure out that we need to adjust. So I would like us to be able to do it now, but it has, as Department of Revenue told me, it has any capabilities to know where your place of residence, your location, you can be, see which precinct you are, to which school, because there are some percentage of it does go to schools to offset some losses, as we call it, which I really don't think we should even use at word circuit break a losses, you know, it should be just, it's just, but we're still using it. So we do have, so we have an ability to track which, you know, which precinct you're going to be at, you know, which school district you are, which town and county too.
When do you expect that to be operational?
As of right now, they'd say 2021, but we'll need to, you know, if government says 2021, you know, I hope 2022, you know? But I think, you know, the original plan was 20, now say 21, but, you know, and I'm going to follow up, but they say within, you know, they already can even run preliminary data now, because I actually was able to get some data last year. It's just not finalized, and we need to give kind of time to implement, clean up all of the glitches and all that stuff, you know? You know, in audit of states, you want also to have, you know, we're looking to have it more simplified. I helped with some project audit of state a few years ago. Oh, my gosh, this is allocations and stuff so convoluted, so prone to errors, so complex. I told, we need to have more simple system. It should be easier to use, not all these calculations. So that's, that's the plan, and we'll, we'll have it done. We have to.
Senator, I have, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Did you say that the chair was Senator Thompson?
Representative Thompson, he's actually, he's the man that worked on this fiscal issue for a long time for the House side. So Todd Houston, he's the chair of Ways and Means right now.
Okay.
But all of the local finance, he had the bills last session on this issues, because this is kind of, him and Representative Leonard do a lot of local finance.
I, I'm just curious, because I've never been contacted to participate or
Yeah.
be a part of any of those committees. Is that something that would be available?
Yeah, if you're interested, I'd be happy to. I'm looking people, because I have so many other issues, and I thought local governors told me not to get involved. Now I have to get involved. So if you're very interested, I'd be happy to connect, because he's working on his, kind of on the numbers this summer on fiscal committee. Fiscal committee this summer is not looking into study, specifically local income tax, only regional development authorities, but the local income tax proposal will be brought up next session. And I was told there were several proposals going to happen, so then we have to participate in this, because it's going to come up.
I, I just think it'd be good if they could reach out to, to somebody on our council, and then maybe our council can appoint somebody.
Be happy to.
Yeah, it would be important, because I know there's some questions that Mr. Beaver's got. I think we've all had issues trying to, it's a guessing game, trying to figure out what kind of tax dollars we're going to have for the next year, and I think we need to try to really refine that. The only way to do that is to have some help from
Yes.
some of these councils.
Yes, and I'd be happy to connect you with people that working on this specific issue. As I said, Representative Houston and Representative Thompson, they have a little bit different views on the issues. So you always have different views, and then you have to reconcile at the end, but I think, you know, it's important to work with, with the House side. We have a few people on the Senate side, Senator Buchanan, he's interested to work on this issue too. And I said, I'll be working with him and Senator Basler too, you know, and Senator Holdman. He's been working a lot, so I thought that I'll, you know, I'll see him next week. So I'll be working, so be happy to connect you with all of them. And I think it's important. Hamilton County is very important, and I think we are a big donor county, so it's important for us to participate in this process.
I agree. We're just trying to relieve some of our frustrations and
No, I understand.
refine as we move forward. Thank you, Senator.
Mr. McKinnney?
Yes.
Thank you. Victoria, thank you for coming. Appreciate the update. I will email you my thoughts on the regional development situation.
Yes.
But the one question I have, which I don't know if anybody else has this burning topic, for the last couple of years, we've had issues about the dark boxes.
Yes.
But I understand that it failed, it did not change this year. That's kind of a big concern, I believe, to us.
Okay. Actually, when I met with the commissioner, Commissioners here, Brendan, other ones, we had that issue in discussion, discussion. Senator Buchanan brought up a proposal on that issue. The way the proposal he brought up, it really didn't address just, you know, dark boxes or big box, you know, big retailers. It's really had application across the board in retail, and the way how it would, you know, that approach, you know, we talked to DLGF, they had concern with approach to kind of apply to small retailers where you cannot use obsolescence or any other ways, you know, to, to, to address, you know, valuation. So we did address this issue a few years ago, and we proposed, you know, my predecessor or some other people, actually a legislator, proposed to use market segmentation. It hasn't been effectively used or tested, but I talked with DLGF, and I told them, you really need to provide a tool, because, you know, there are not that many sales that happen, and you need to provide a tool for local governments to be able to utilize that market approach and segmentation in a better way, that we don't have a lot of lawsuits, you know? And as I understand, there was a recent lawsuit, and the results of it, Senator Buchanan was going to wait what's happening in the tax court, how it's going to be ruled, and look maybe in the way how we can have a better way, maybe if we need to apply market segmentation, because we already have a tool. You know, the concerns we had, if we're going to take and apply cost approach to any small store, large store, don't allow people, you know, apply market obsolescence or depreciation on different assets, it can hurt a lot of business owners. But we also cannot be in a position where we're going to have people abusing the system and go to the lowest comps, you know, and maybe not the best comps, but then we have a lot of lawsuits to spend money. So Senator Buchanan is going to look into the issue again. Senator Rogers, you know, she work, she is a golf course owner from northern Indiana. She worked actually to develop income approach for all golf courses, value assessment in the state of Indiana. So she, I volunteer her too. So I told Senator Buchanan, we can help you if we want to look how we can provide a better tools to provide this assessment, because I think, you know, applying cost method and say that's a market approach, it's also, we cannot say that with coming of Amazon, I just went to Whole Foods, you know, we, you know, you can tell that, you know, they say you can have it delivered at home. So we can say, we cannot say that the same value and the same sales that happened 10 years or five years ago, and they don't have any loss of revenue value, these big stores. But definitely not to the level how they try to push it, you know? So I think there is some, some better approach to look at all of these approaches, you know?
I appreciate
No, no.
the explanation, and I don't want to get too much in the weeds, but just, you know, as you talk to the commissioners
I understand.
and, and we have talked, like with our assessor. It's a huge concern, and I know other counties have already spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal fees because of the way the, the tax court and certain things have been interpreted.
Yes, I agree.
To us, it's been like a ticking time bomb, and especially for those TIF districts that could be hit really hard and cause income issues for all the people that have TIFs relying on that income.
Right.
So I don't, I don't want to give more details, but
But I think it's another thing, talking to TIF district, we also maybe should look, and we cannot have over reliance, and maybe we'll look at the, how much percentage reliance you can have on this big box in, in the TIF districts, because, you know, you need to diversify a little bit your tax base, and I think that's issue with some of them, they anticipate much higher AV, but market moved in a different directions, and now we have, so we have to look, is it a problem? That's why reporting by TIF district will help us as a state to see, maybe we need to put some guardrails and a percentage of, you know, that AV you can use on one major retailer in TIF district, because the world has changed, we all know, and it will be changing in much faster pace than it's before, and sometimes it's hard to tell what's going to be in 20 years. The whole tax system has to be restarted. We have it, and, you know, if you have sometimes come to fiscal committee to visit, you will enjoy listening and everything, how people say we all have no vehicles, everything is going to be driverless, no fuel. So every, you know, anticipation of future revenues is going to change the dynamics. We have to adjust, make sure we have more sustainable revenues to provide services. But we'll look at that issue. Your point is well taken. I've heard from a lot of different people, and I'll be happy to help.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Senator.
Okay, thank you so much, and I'm going to send you some, you have all of my, I tell everyone, you can text me, that's the best way, you know, and I'll provide and connect you with some of the fiscal work this summer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on. We're going to go to the funding of the comprehensive plan. Linda Burdette and Steve Swartz.
Good evening. My name is Linda Burdette. I'm the office manager of the Hamilton County Plan Commission. Chuck Kipart is our director, and he is out of the office this week. Our north border zoning appeals had a petition brought before them in the first quarter of this year. One of the remonstrators stated during the meeting and to the TV news media that Hamilton County needed to look at their comprehensive plan because of all the development that was happening. After that comment was made, Chuck did some checking and found that it was suggested by the Planning Association that the comprehensive plan be revisited every 10 to 15 years for a community our size. The last time our comprehensive plan was done was in 2006. It took three years from start to finish. Chuck said he didn't think the entire plan needed to be overhauled, because he felt the goals and objectives for our jurisdictional area of the Hamilton County had not changed. The areas we will focus on will be determined by the Plan Commission, the consultants, the steering committee, and Chuck himself, once a population study is done. Twelve requests for proposals were sent out on Monday, and we requested that the requests be posted on the American Planning Association Indiana Chapter website. The proposals are to be returned to us by August 23 at 4:00 p.m., to be opened at the Plan Commission meeting at their meeting on September 18. If there is a bid that is acceptable, then the Plan Commission will interview the potential consultant at their October 16 meeting. The first public meeting would probably not take place until early December or January of next year. I'm not sure who Chuck was working with, but there was a suggested cost of $150,000 to $170,000. The Plan Commission voted on an amount not to exceed $150,000, with the understanding that council would be the ones to make the final decision and when the money would become available. The only outside cost that I can think of would be the postage for the notices to be sent to the property owners in our jurisdictional area of Hamilton County, which is anticipated to be about $4,000, and any overtime hours that I would incur because of attending these meetings. And I'll do the best I can to answer any questions.
Thanks, Linda.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we're going to get a update or request or something from the Hamilton County Economic Development Corporation. Carol Sergi?
Sergi.
Okay.
Good evening. Thank you. Thanks for the time. I appreciate it from the council. This is just an update. The Hamilton County Economic Development Corporation, you may or may not know, reorganized during 2018, and I was hired in October to primarily work on workforce attraction, since that was a need in the county that was not being addressed. So this is really just an update to let you know. You should have a one sheet that kind of gives a recap of what has happened. So I just want to highlight a couple of things while I'm here. One of the things is that we will be starting a marketing campaign. We've identified three different communities that we'll be doing that in, Chicago, Detroit, and Cincinnati, for workforce attraction to the area. And then also, we applied for, through our office, the 21st Century Talent Region, which there will be 12 of those designated through the state. It was important that Hamilton County was not left out of that conversation, and that we would be one of those counties or areas, regions that were a part of that. So we've applied for that. We're in the process of strategic planning for workforce attraction, retention, and development. And then also, I'm also involved in the Indiana Talent Network, which is a statewide effort for talent attraction, retention, and development as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Isn't there a plan to bring some sort of request to us next month?
Yes.
That's when the rubber hits the road.
Exactly.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on. Appropriation of grant funds. The first one is 8142, which is a public health emergency preparedness. $334,000 and a 144 amendment. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Then we'll go with the Fund 8221. What is that, Rick?
Federal Highway.
Federal Highway, that's right. $18,064 reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
That passes. Okay, now we're going to go to additional appropriations and reductions, so I'm going to now open the public hearing concerning additional appropriations. The first one we have is Commissioner's 144 Amendment, reclassification of human resource benefits specialists to COMF to benefits and safety risk specialist to PATB. Adopt a new job description and transfer $28,525.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. The second thing we have, it court administration, a 144 amendment, and need a transfer of $3,900. Judge, did you want to speak to that issue?
I'll answer any question.
You're going to stay seated? Okay?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Buildings and grounds transfer of $131,996.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. ISS additional appropriation with the sponsor of Amy Masalani.
I move for discussion.
Second.
What are we going to spend, $179,000?
Come on, Chris. We had an employee called to active duty who's out at the sheriff's office. $79,200 of that is for us to bring in a contract employee to cover that time while he's gone. I worked with a couple of different vendors. Van Osdell, who does our print management, also offers a service for, you know, bringing employees in, and we worked out a deal, a contract with them for the $79,200. So that's, that part of the additional. It's estimated that Casey will be gone at least 12 months on active duty, so that's one year from Van Osdell, essentially. one year from Van Osdell, essentially. The $100,000 relates also, I think, down, an item down further on the agenda, where we're transferring $100,000 from the non-reverting fund, and then that is going into our budget. And so, it's an additional, but it's coming from, ultimately, from our non-reverting fund, and really specifically into the hardware budget. We had some unexpected expenses on hardware, and our hardware budget wasn't large to start with, and we are simply making sure that we can finish out the year with our hardware budget from the non-reverting fund.
Any other questions for Chris?
I have none.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Chris.
Can I go back?
Yes, go ahead, Rick.
I just wanted to run back the item that we approved for the buildings and grounds, That's to make the lease payment on the solar panel bond that we have. In addition to that, we're attached, that was a sheet from Director Steve Wood, and it appears that we have almost saved $200,000 year-to-date. So, looks like it's a win-win for everybody, so.
Yeah.
Thanks, Steve. Thank you.
We made some money today. Yeah, okay. Thanks, Rick. Moving forward, the sheriff, he wants to adopt a new job description, changing a corrections officer to a management assistant, support services. 144 amendment needs to transfer $15,614.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Soil and water additional with Ken Alexander as the sponsor. That's an additional appropriation of $10,756.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second. Ken, you got anything you want to say?
Yes. Just, this is a, an opportunity. We have a part-time employee that is serving soil and water in a capacity that has, he touches a lot of things within the department. He's a very valuable employee, but as we know, with the type of weather we have exactly today, the type of issues that we have growing all over our yards and parks and things of that nature is the invasive species that is, you probably see in the news and things of that nature. As part of that was mentioned earlier, the, part of the parks tour was actually looking at those invasive species and how their impact is affecting our parks, not just at the local municipality level, but at the county level. The opportunity is, we've been pursued to try and provide some leadership within our county to bring all the different bodies that are implementing corrective actions and things like that, to provide leadership to that group. This would, the money that's being requested is to take this part-time employee and take him part-time through the end of the year so that he can continue that and have a conversation about that, our role in that at the next budget cycle. Claire Lane is here to answer questions about that, and Claire, if you want to come forward. I'm sure Ginger, if you'd like to, as well.
I don't, I don't have a problem.
Any questions?
Yeah, I don't have a problem going ahead and funding it through the end of the year, because again, we just heard about it last month, and I feel bad for, you know, somebody whose job would end in a couple of weeks. But after our meeting, and I've done some study on it, I'm not going to be really in favor of adding a person full-time next year just for education. I would rather do something that eradicates the invasive species. But again, I'm, I'll support this, but I don't think I'll be doing it at budget. That's my two cents.
Do we, do we, do we have a motion to say?
Yes, certain, yeah.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Okay, the next thing is judicial center expansion for $400,000. It looks like the sponsor was the joint session. This is for the infrastructure improvements we've been working on for a year or so, $400,000.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Well, because again, we had done it at the end of last year.
Right. We appropriated this money once and didn't get it spent.
And it rolled back in.
Steve's been working on it for over a year. He's got it down to a manageable level.
I just want to clarify.
Yeah, that's what this is.
About at the joint session, I remember.
Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There you go.
Thanks, Steve.
The next thing on our agenda, let me look here. Solid Waste Management District wants $37,000, and Leslie is here to tell us why. They actually want to buy a fork truck.
Sign it in the form either.
Yeah, thank you for having me tonight. Thank you to the rest of the county council. Our current diesel JCB telehandlers are over 14 years old. It's costing a lot in repairs and maintenance. We'd like the additional money from the solid waste fund to pay for a new liquid propane forklift. We manage over 2 million pounds a year from our facility in hazardous waste, E-waste. This would be a really great asset to help support our program.
Your motion.
No, stop. Motion to approve.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
There you go.
Thank you, Leslie.
The next is 1122 Project Income Appropriating Grants Funds with the sponsor of Steve Swartz. What is this, Steve?
Ralph's going to come up and give us a detailed explanation.
Detailed explanation.
Pretty simple, basically just appropriating grant funds.
That's the detail?
Yes. One change this year has been that the Department of Corrections has chosen to change the grant program fiscal year from a June 1, I'm sorry, July 1 to June 30 fiscal year to a January to a calendar year, essentially, which will be very beneficial when it's all put in place, but it essentially requires a six-month time period. And so, what has occurred is with the commissioners, our grant has been extended by the state for six months, so it's now an 18-month grant. With that, I have to appropriate, ask for an appropriation for that last six months of the year, and the project income amount that you see in C is what was approved by the state of Indiana for us to use. And I don't know if that's something you want to consider along with, but 9106, letter P, is the other part of that budget.
Okay, so what you're saying is that we should do them both together?
It would probably be a good opportunity.
Good enough.
I'll make a motion to approve, but Ralph, I want to double check. You said 18 months, not 16?
It, yes, I'm sorry, it's 18 months, yes. The last six months, the grant year traditionally ended June 30, but it began July 1 to, yes, December 31.
Paperwork says 16. That's what I wanted to clarify.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Thank you very much, Ralph.
Thanks, Ralph.
Thank you.
Okay, the next is 1127, Hamilton County Convention and Visitors Bureau requesting
So moved.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There you go. Where's Brenda? She's smiling.
Aye.
Okay. There's your money, young lady. You're welcome.
As promised.
Yeah, there you go. This next one is Fund 1159 Health Fund, they're requesting $167,246. Barry called me on this. It's a grant funding title. I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Fund 1222, State 911, adopt a revised job description, title change only, adopt revised job description, shift supervisor, reclassify training and insurance, pole Z to train my, amended 144, transfer of $19,809.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes. Fund 1222, 144 amendment for, what is that? ISS?
Yep. It's a reclassification. Sorry, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
Which one was that?
That is Fund 1222.
The 144 amendment.
Remember G, it's item G. Got it? Fund 1224, reassessment fund, requesting $53,500. Amy is the sponsor.
So moved. More approval?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Fund 2500, user fee for veterans, requesting $3,460. Amy is the sponsor there.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. The next one is Fund 4601, Revenue Bonds for 2011, they're requesting $301. I'll make the motion.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
These are just math to, to make sure these things get paid on time. The next one is Fund 4619, which is a Hamilton County General Obligation Bond Series from 2002, requesting $1. I'll make a motion.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
That passes. Fund 4620, Hamilton County Parks District Refunding Bond, requesting $1. I'll make a motion.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Now we're to Fund 4807, Non-Reverting Computing or Maintenance Fund, requesting $100,000. Do, we already do that?
Yeah.
That was the $100,000 we.
Right. Do we need to, we need to vote on this, don't, Robin?
We didn't come back.
Yeah, this is different.
Okay, all right.
And you had to appropriate.
Who's making the motion?
So moved. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Fund 4905, Digital, say the word for me, Amy.
Ortho Photography?
There you go. They want $343,000.
Make a motion.
All second. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
Nice question.
Yes, go ahead.
Chris, this, is this the actual taking the pictures? It says consultant services, so is this applying it, doing it?
It's a little higher than in the past years because they completely redid all of the ortho photography this year. It's just not just the pictures, it's LiDAR, it's all the, it's a complete new imagery, so.
And they're going to do it?
It's already done. It's already done.
It was done before the leaves came out?
They flew, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Big Brother is looking in your backyard, in my backyard.
Yep.
The taxpayers backyard.
That's right.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks, Chris, thanks.
We're working on clearing those images up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. I feel a lot better.
Yeah.
Fund 4907 needs a 144 amendment.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. We've already did P for Community Corrections, so we're to Q. Fund 9135, Court Recidivism Reduction Grant needs $110,532. And Amy makes move, makes a motion?
I'll second.
There's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Fund 9136 for Physical, Physical Year 19, transfer of $25,000. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Fund 9144, Pre-Trial Supervision Grant, Amy Masalani is the sponsor. They want $122.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Fund 9146, Veterans Court Problem Solving, requesting $7,500.
So moved. I second.
Okay, that's a motion from Amy and a second from Rick. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Fund 9147, Drug Court Problem Solving Grant, requesting $10,000, and Rick is the sponsor.
So moved.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. At this point, I will close the public hearing on additional appropriations. Looks like we also got an item, Fund 8253, which is DUI Task Force Grant. What do we, what do we want to be done here? Do you know, Robin?
Six cents. Six cents.
Six cents transfer.
So moved.
Second.
Second on that six cents? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. I have one item myself under miscellaneous. I received a letter from the president.
Yes.
I already seen it, it was in red, Don. I got a letter from the president of the Sheridan Library, said that their library board member, Loretta Sutherland, her term expired June 10, and they'd have, like to have her reappointed to another four-year term, and sent all the paperwork and whatnot. I have no reason to think this is not correct, so I would make a motion that we reappoint Loretta to the Sheridan Library unless somebody else has another nominee.
I'll second that motion.
Moving second. Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes. Robin, do you want this paperwork they sent with us?
Yes.
Okay, I'll just keep it right here.
Mr. Chairman, I have one item under miscellaneous.
Go ahead, Steve.
Just to follow up with an item that was on our agenda earlier about the planning and the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
Do you want to have that and address that in the next month, or do you want to wait till the budget hearings?
I personally would do it as an additional appropriation. When you come up, when the Plan Commission comes up with the number?
Okay.
You get the bids, you decide which one you want.
Okay.
I would say just come to us, we'll do the appropriate, additional appropriation for whatever dollar amount you set on.
Okay, that way I can report back to the Planning Commission.
Work for you guys?
It works fine. I just needed some direction.
Anybody else okay with that?
As long as the auditor is okay.
I'll approve it, Kenny.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else have miscellaneous?
I have two items.
Go ahead, Rick.
I'm not, I don't think I've distributed it yet, and I apologize. I was working with Mike Reuter, and he's been working with Department of Revenue to get us some reports on the food and beverage tax and how it's distributed, et cetera. And I believe now they're going to start sending it monthly to the auditor, and then they'll distribute it to us, but they have a mechanism to send that to us. Secondly, from our last meeting, I met with the CFO at ACIS Power Marketing, because they failed to show up for our approval last month, and he was deeply apologetic and indicated that the email must just drop through the cracks. Their facility is amazing. They've also gone under some new laws for access to it, something like Critical Infrastructure Protection Act, et cetera. But anybody, everybody on the council is welcome to, you know, call them, and if you want to go visit.
want to go visit. Their annual report is no longer on paper. It's now on video, and he gave it to me with the request that it not be widely distributed. So if anybody wants it, let me know, and I'll send it to you. They're quite proprietary about certain things, so, but they're doing fantastic, so they're.
And they're paying their taxes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And they're following all the guidelines?
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
All right. Did you have something else, Rick?
Nope, that's it.
Any other counselors have anything under miscellaneous? Amy?
No, sir.
No? Okay, let's go to Sheriff. Do you have any announcements for us?
Yeah, I have a letter in your packet to share with you from the State Department of Corrections. They've changed how they're doing reimbursements for the Level 6 felons. They are going to provide a lump sum funding upfront as opposed to reimbursing every month for the number of offenders that we have in the jail. So the amount we'll receive for the state's fiscal year, which starts in July, is $700,560.
They're giving us a lump sum?
Correct.
They have no idea how many prisoners we're going to hold?
That is correct. So they are basing this on the largest amount that we've had in the last couple of years. Essentially, the state raised the amount of per diem from $35 a day to $37.50 per day for, for next year, and then they're raising it again, another $2.50 for the following year. They have a total of $30 million in their budget, and they came up with a formula how to allocate that whole $30,000. Based on my projections, what we've done historically, we will actually come out a little bit ahead.
Right. Is that like, is that like distributing income when you don't, income tax when you don't know where it came from? Would that be the same process there?
I will refrain from.
Okay. Thank you, Sheriff. So you think we'll probably come out a little?
Yeah, we would have to hold several more offenders for it not to be advantageous for us.
Based on one day? Did I hear that right? You said that?
So the rate is, has been $35 per day in the past. They're raising it to $37.50, and then it'll be another $2.50 raise in the fall.
But the amount of people that they're basing that on was based on one day or is it based on?
No, the last couple of years and the average that we've had over the last couple of years. So we, we hold about, hang on one second, I could tell you, 49.4 per day on average. I think this number, we would need to hold 41.2 to break even and then additional to, I'm sorry, that's not correct. We would need to hold 54 to break even, and then any additional that, we would lose money, essentially, from the total funding.
You'll continue to do your tracking to make?
We will absolutely do our tracking, make sure how we're doing, and I'll report back to you. And my understanding is the additional years funding that, for next year, they'll do the same formula. With us coming out ahead, my assumption is there are others in the state that didn't fare so well.
Anything else, Sheriff?
Nope.
Thank you very much.
Got one item, Mr. Chairman. Just a reminder that the Hamilton County 4H Fair is coming up this month. It's July 18 through the 22nd, and then the auction is on the 23rd of July. Hope you can all attend.
Council Attorney, do you have anything for us?
Nothing to report.
Adam Auditor.
I do. I just want to report that I have lived through another State Board of Accounts audit. Yay. I do want to thank my staff. We did have a new consultant this year, Baker Tilly, and so we have worked diligently, and we had all of our exit conferences and got by with only a couple of internal control issues, so I just wanted to report that.
Thank you. With that, anybody else from the council got anything?
Have nothing.
We're adjourned.